2023, and I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meetings for this evening. I'd like to announce this meeting is being televised live and live on cable, channel eight. If we would like to all rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, just as for all.
Next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any items, agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. I see none. Thank you. I'd like to ask for public comment. On each hearing tonight, it should be held until the end of that presentation. I will go out to the public and ask for public input at the end of each presentation. So tonight, we have five regular board members in attendance, so they will be at each hearing. What I will do is ask the three associates to read into the record, so they're involved, and certainly I entice them to ask any questions that they may have in reference to every application. That being said, Charlie, would you like to read the first, I guess, continued hearing?
Sure, be happy to. Agenda for October 11th, 2023, Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals, continued hearings. 108 Captain's Row, owners Nicholas M. and Kathy DiGusto, trustees request a written finding under section 174-17, 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for replacement of an access timber stairway and lower deck to dock on property located in an R3 zoning district map 96, parcel 16, Mashpee, Mass. Received a letter from, I believe Attorney Corrine.
Yes.
Requesting a continuance until November 8th, 2023 hearing.
Thank you, Charlie. Terry?
Thank you. Yes, on this project, it still hasn't been heard by conservation, so, you know, as kind of the board policy, we want to make sure we got our conservation approval before we bring the project to this board, so.
Thank you very much. Charlie, would you like to read that record, please? Read the letter into the record, please.
I will.
From Mr. Corrine.
If I have it right here in front of me, which I think-
If you don't, if someone else has it, they can read it also.
I don't think you have it.
Oh, no, no, we don't.
There must have. Well, then, here you go. You have it now. So Sharon will read it into the record. Thank you, Sharon.
All right. I have a letter dated October 2nd, 2023, in regards to 108 Captain's Row, Nicholas and Kathy DiGusto. Dear Chairman Bonvy, as you know, we represent the owners of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that Wednesday, October 11th, 2023 hearing to be continued to November 8th, 2023, as the applicants are currently waiting to appear before the Conservation Commission. Thank you for your attention. Very truly yours, Christopher J. Corrine.
Mary Ann, do we have room in the November 8th meeting? Okay. Could I get a motion from somebody?
I have one. Mary Ann, we're not going to go beyond the extension. Okay.
Someone like to make a motion to approve the letter and the extension, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the letter as the motion to continue till November 8th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good.
Mr. George, would you like to read the next continued hearing, please?
Continued hearings. 61 Shoestring Bay Road, petitioner 61 Shoestring Bay Road LLC requests a variance under section 174-33 of the zoning bylaws, parentheses setback from wetlands to allow for construction of a new single-family dwelling and attached garage on property located in an R3 zoning district, parentheses Willow Bend Development, and a parentheses map 84, parcel 35, Mashpee, Mass. Received letter from attorney requesting a continuance until October 25th, 2023 hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair members of the board. Again, similar to the last project, we're still waiting to go before conservation on this project. The only thing I would ask, instead of October 25th, I think we would need the November 8th hearing.
So you're requesting to amend your letter?
Correct.
Until?
November 8th.
November 8th. Sharon, if you could make note of that, please. So Sharon, would you read the letter into the record, please?
Hey, I have a letter dated October 2nd, 2023, in regard to 21 Shoestring Bay Road LLC. Dear Chairman Bonvy, as you know, we represent the owners of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that Wednesday, October 11th hearing be continued to November 8th, 2023, as the applicants are currently scheduled to be heard before the Conservation Commission on October 19th, 2023. Thank you for your attention. Very truly yours, Christopher J. Corrine.
So I'd like to make it part of the record that the, Chris Corrine, the attorney who wrote the letter, requested November 19th, no, October 25th, is now asking for November 8th.
That is correct.
Is that correct? So I'd like to get a motion, please, that we accept the letter with a modification of the letter that it, the attorney is hereby requesting November 8th. And we do have time? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, make a motion that we accept the letter with the new date of November 8th on continuance of 61 Shoestring Bay Road.
Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so Brad, would you read the first new hearing?
New hearing. Thank you. 9 Woodland Avenue. Owners Richard N. and Teresa G. Monroe request a written finding under section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a deck reconstruction, a three-season porch addition, and extension over an existing garage to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R5 zoning district map 49, parcel 98, Mashpee, Mass.
Is Richard or Teresa in the audience?
Yeah.
Come on up, and if you could state your name and your address, sir, that would be greatly appreciated. And ma'am, you also? I guess there's only three, so.
We can share.
Hmm?
Be very lucky.
Yeah.
Here are the households.
Richard Monroe, 9 Woodland Ave., Mashpee, Mass.
Teresa Monroe, 9 Woodland Ave., Mashpee, Mass.
Great. So what would you like to do, sir? And ma'am?
What we'd like to do is straighten the edge of the deck out. Basically, when I built the deck originally, I put it at an angle, and now we want to put a three-season room over it, and that angle just doesn't work out very well. It adds more construction cost and it cuts down the space available in the room.
Would you like to say anything, ma'am?
He said three-season room, but actually, that area is in a screened porch, not the three-season room.
Okay.
That should be on the plan.
I see proposed deck addition.
Yep, it's like a wedge.
Okay, could I have some comments ready to the record? I understand there are obligations. Yep. People in the community and/or agents.
I have some here.
You would, Charlie?
Please. Let me just make sure.
Done.
Yep. Okay, relative to, first, from Catherine Laurent, an email dated October 11th, 2023, relative to 9 Woodland Avenue. Good morning, Mary Ann. DPW is requesting that a condition of any approval be imposed requiring that the property owner install dry wells on their existing dwelling, as well as any additional, any addition to contain stormwater runoff on their property. After receiving a complaint this summer from the adjacent property owner, 264 Hoop Pole Road, about flooding in his backyard, DPW investigated and found evidence of stormwater runoff from 9 Woodland Avenue flowing down the applicant's driveways along the backside of the road berm and into the neighbor's backyard. Attached is a photo taken last week showing the ravine created in one of the driveways by the stormwater from their roof downspout. Please let me know if you have any questions on this request. Thanks, Catherine. And, an email Wednesday, 10/4/2023, to Mary Ann Romero, from Gene and Gary Siwick, 264 Hoop Pole Road. To whom it may concern, we received your notice for a hearing on October 11th, 2023, regarding the property located at 9 Woodland Avenue in Mashpee. Gary and I will not be able to attend the meeting, and wanted to let you know that we are not opposed to the project at this location.
Do we have any other letters? Board of Health or Conservation? Is that it?
Board of Health, no comment, no increase in habitable, habitable spa-
Okay.
Habitable. Habitable space, thank you.
Anything from Conservation?
Conservation, no well-insure restriction.
Okay. Board member comments, please.
Hi, everyone. If we were gonna make, if I was gonna make a motion, if I, if I'm gonna add dry well to be added, ask for a DPW, do they have to be designed by an engineer?
Yeah, I looked at this. I was concerned about the extent of the application and the fact that the DPW made the statement, right? Because it's such small, what concerns me, we're on notice, DPW, I was saying, we have, we have water coming off the lot that exists, so I, as a board, we're gonna have to manage through this as best we can.
Can I, can I make a statement on this?
Certainly you can.
Okay. All right. Yes, we've been here since 1974, and there's been a little washout there for the whole entire time. Every couple of years, I put some dirt, just plain dirt, in there, and it takes about two years for it to wash out. This is obviously not a large amount of water. The amount of water is coming from, the overage amount of water is coming from Hoop Pole Road. When we first moved there, and Gary's right, lives right next door, and it's coming across his, front of his yard, the corner, it's washing across his yard from, from Hoop Pole Road, not from, not from me. When we first moved there, you know, this is back when the road was the holiest road in the country, and then it was paved over, but then, years later, they went in and restructured that whole road. And part of the reason I restructured that whole road is because the water on Hoop Pole Road that comes down in front of Gary's house, instead of coming down Hoop Pole Road, the road was pitched and it would flow across into the parking lot. Now they fixed the road so that that's not going across there. Now, in all reasonableness, that was a good thing to do for, you know, getting ice off the road in the wintertime, because it was, it would sheet across there. But that meant that all the water that was, used to go across the road and into the parking lot is now coming down Hoop Pole Road. And that's where the majority of the water is coming from, is not coming from us. Ours is probably less than 5% if that.
Why don't we continue around the board? One second.
Sure.
And I'll hear you again, if that's okay?
Sure.
Anybody in the board have any comments in reference to this issue?
Sure. Did you speak to the DPW about it?
I have not. I just got this letter today. This is, I just got it at like 10 o'clock this morning.
Because this is what the DPW was saying.
I understand, but the DPW doesn't have any idea what they're talking about with the history. I do. I lived there for the entire time, and I know what the construction, what was when and what and where, and when all this problem started with all the water.
It may make some, yeah, I think I have, I have a thought here, but-
We're in a little bit of a stale.
Yeah, why don't we go around the board? I'd like to talk to, have David speak his piece, and we'll go to the audience, but I have some comments I think they can manage through it. Anyone else?
I'd rather hear your comments before I make mine.
Yeah, well-
Being that you've put roads in.
David, what do you have to say in reference to this?
Well, certainly, we can, with the new roof, we can have gutters going into a dry well. I mean, that's, that's a given, without a problem. The house has been there since 1974, before building codes were, were part of Massachusetts. So, you know, it's tough one to say what, what we are able to do, or what the, you know, the board serves can impose some more investigation on this.
When I go to the audience, and then I'll tell you what my thoughts are. Anyone in the audience have any input in this application? Okay. My attitude is as follows. I think that it would be in the best interest of the applicant to sit down with the DPW director, and the DPW director may be able to help the applicant with a simple, with a simple input.
Sure.
And that way, as the chair, I'm not asking you, as one member, also not asking you to go back to an engineer, redesign, do drainage calculations and drainage studies, unless the DPW director comes back and says it's imperative that you do. And I, I think that we should leave it up to the applicant to go back to DPW, because we're put on record that there's a drainage issue. We don't know what, what it is.
Sure, not a problem.
We're nov-, I'm a novice on this board, I can, I'll admit that, and I'm not gonna be the person to sit there and says, you do this, this, and this, in reference to this application. I do have a DPW director sitting there saying, we have an issue, and I, we can't overlook it.
But if the, if the issue is coming off the road, why is it his issue? Or his-
We don't know that.
We don't, and that's the thing.
This picture we're getting, which doesn't look that bad to me, is, where is this piece of property?
It's, it's-
The neighbor, right?
It's the neighbor's property?
That's ours, that's ours.
That's your property?
That's ours, oh, yes.
I, I don't want to-
Looks like run, it looks like run up a little street to me.
How many, I mean, many times I've seen redesigned roadways, thus, you know, design of water is put in a different location. I, I'm hoping that you could, in my opinion, I think that's the safest way for everybody involved.
Couldn't agree more.
And I, DPW directors is, is a person that's willing to sit down and listen, Catherine has done well with our community and, and residents, so.
Yep, no problem.
Recommend sit down and have a meeting with her and see if you can work things out.
Sure.
And it might be the addition of a small basin or something of that nature, I don't know, I can't speak for Catherine. I just want to get her off the record at being, you know, making the statement, and that I'm hoping her statement will change to be, I'm all set with the following addition.
Sure.
If that's what she wants.
Yep.
So would you be willing to extend to the next hearing, sir, in light of that issue?
Yeah, is this going to hold up the rest of it? In other, in other words, we have 20 days after we, the meeting is, is done for input from whomever, as I understand it. Now, you know, if we go to the next meeting, would that extend it to 20 days beyond that?
Yeah, well, let me, let me help you out. Why don't we take a consensus from the board? I, as the chairman, subject to Catherine Laurent and you getting, DPW and director and you getting together, you and your wife getting together, working things out, I have no problem with your application.
Fine.
Could I get a consensus of the board? Does that make sense, ladies and gentlemen?
So Ron, are you suggesting that we take a vote on this?
No.
Subject to?
No. I'm suggesting that we extend, but I'm, I'm just saying to the applicant, it's probably important to him and her that they understand that they're not wasting time here. I'm okay with the application subject to it being worked out with the DPW director, asking for an extension, so when they come back and they have the DPW director and they have worked things out, I would not, I would be in favor of this application.
I, I agree with that.
But that's not answering his question. He's gonna have to, he's gonna lose-
Well, I was gonna get into that next. So here's the thing, sir. What we normally do as a board, we would ask you for an extension for the next, for the next meeting, which would be, can he, can he go to that meeting? Or is it too long?
I have another question, though.
How close are you to the pond?
Oh, good heavens.
Hoop Pole Road. Yeah, but there will be next, it's changing, that's why I'm asking.
You mean the 150 feet?
Yes, that, this-
Are you more than 150 feet away from the pond?
Okay, because you mentioned the parking lot, that's why I-
Oh, well, yeah, the, the, so the parking lot is for the beaches up, that is, it's a quarter mile walk down to the beach.
Okay.
So ma'am, when will be the-
I'm on the other side.
I know, it's all right.
When's the next available meeting that he could attend? So you're looking at November 8th. So what happens, sir, is-
No way it can be done sooner?
Four, is it?
It's your call. It's the board's call. Your next meeting, which I may not be attending, is October 25th. It's a little tight.
But wasn't there one being continued, continued October? We changed that to November 8th? That was gonna go down?
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can agree that way.
All right, so the next meeting would be October, what was it again? 25th. So what happens, we'd ask you for an extension, you'd out, you would say, we'd like to request, you'd say of this board, we'd like to request an extension until October 25th, and your 20 days would not start until such time as this board votes on your application, which would be that night presumably.
So then we have another 20 days after that before we can start doing anything?
That is correct. But I, I'm not trying to be harsh, but if you push the board into making a vote, it may not be in your best interest.
Understood.
Does that make sense?
I guess.
Would you like to ask for an extension?
I would like to ask for an extension.
Till October 20-
8th.
25th.
25th, I'm sorry.
So you're hereby asking for an extension?
I am asking for an extension until October 25th.
Okay, so, could I get a motion?
I, I, I don't agree.
Okay.
I mean, it's a whole board, this is one member. The run-up is a straight issue. He's trying to put a roof over a deck. You put dry wells in for that, he's handling the water that's coming off the roof, why is he gonna be held up for two weeks? Because there's a run-up situation on the road that he didn't put in.
Well, one of the bylaws in town, correct me if I'm wrong, is all water has to stay on their property.
Yes.
And there's a picture here that he agrees that there's a trench on his property of water flowing and stuff leaving. So right there, there's an issue.
Why don't we do it this way? Why don't I, why don't I-
There are trenches like this all around Jones Pond.
Does that make sense?
Ladies and gentlemen, yeah, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask-
Probably a lot worse.
Yeah.
One second, I'm gonna ask for an opinion here. So you're, you would rather vote on it tonight?
I personally, as one member-
Yep.
Are in favor of this project, with the condition that he puts dry wells in to handle the downspouts coming off the new addition.
Jonathan, what do you think?
So what he's saying is, you're gonna have to put in dry wells.
Dry wells under the, under the downspouts?
Yeah, he's making that, he's making that determination.
So it's just, so it's not just-
Yeah, but that may not be adequate, that's my concern.
I'm not an engineer.
Right. So Jonathan, how would you like to handle this application?
I agree with you.
Okay. Billy, how would you like to handle it?
Yeah, I think we, we need to settle it with DPW first.
Okay. Sharon, how would you like to mean it?
I'm, I'm actually on Scott's side on this one.
Well, it's three to two. So at this point, sorry, ladies and gentlemen. So sir, would you like to ask for a, an extension then?
Yes, I would like to ask for an extension.
Okay, until October 25th.
Yes.
Could I get a motion to extend this, this public hearing until October 25th, please?
We got, we have a-
I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I already went to the audience, but it's good.
I'm the contractor that might be doing this job.
Why don't you come right up to me?
Come on up, you have to identify yourself.
My name's Tom Griffin, I'm a licensed contractor in the state of Massachusetts, and this has been kind of difficult for the both of them, going through what's been, you know, we get so far, and then they go, oh, now you're gonna go through the zoning board, which we're doing today, and there's no, can we get the approval on the addition? They've been waiting quite a while to get this going, so I'm kind of curious. And I have another, one other question.
The only thing this board approves, so I presume you're asking, can you get an approval on the plans?
Yes.
That would be, that's, that's after you get by this board. The zoning enforcement officer sits on this board, he's right there.
Right, I know David, yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, David, you've gotta get an approval from this board first, and then the zoning enforcement officer would at that point accept plans. Am I correct? So I don't know, that's the process, as you know, sir, being a contractor, that's how it has to work.
Yeah, okay. Getting back to these drains, that's not gonna be at a cost to them.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
The DPW director could-
The water that's coming down the hill-
No, 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 not, not the hill, the water that's coming off a house in the-
Wait, wait, stop, stop right there. The DPW could say, in her infinite wisdom, she could say, this water needs to be handled that's coming down the hill and onto your property, and back off your property again needs to be handled by you, and I want, have a drainage study done, and I want additional structures put into your property. She could say that. Now whether this board concurs, that's up to this board, but this board, there are no engineers on this board, and so what happens is, we rely on other people's inputs, specifically DPW director. We have a letter on, on file that says she's concerned about the water that's coming off your site, and I'm saying the best way to handle it is for your, the people you are gonna be doing business for, these two applicants, is to go meet with the DPW director and discuss it with her, so that they can come back to this board with that, with that whole situation settled. Yes, or no?
Sir, did I hear you say that the water that's coming down the hill into our property is our responsibility?
No, I said she, the DPW director, could, didn't say she would, could say the water is still coming off your property. I can't speak for the DPW director, and that's why, as one member, I think it's best for you to go back to the DPW director and work this letter out and figure out what would satisfy her needs as far as the water issue on your property.
So if you were living in a home that was sort of at the bottom of a hill, and water was coming down onto your property, and someone were to say this to you, you would, you would gladly accept the responsibility?
Well, they haven't said it to you yet, ma'am. I'm just saying she could.
You see, she has a possibility, she could say that.
No one has said that to you.
Yeah.
No one has said that to you. I may have, probably not have said that to you. I'm just saying there is a possibility, and that's why, as one member, I'm sitting there, I'm not an engineer, okay? And the DPW has given us a letter, and in that letter, it says, hey, board, you have to condition it on certain things. Deal with this water. We don't know how to deal with the water. I don't. You need to talk to her to figure out how she wants you to deal with this issue.
She investigated it, so she-
Exactly.
Yep.
She got a better idea than even I.
Exactly. So she's the one who brought it up, you need to talk to her to deal with it, to bring it to a head, and figure out if in fact you can satisfy her concerns. And then you'll come back to the board on the 25th, and we will make a decision.
Okay.
You've heard from the board that no one, that everybody, from what I've heard, is in favor of your application, subject to the water issue being satisfied.
Okay.
Does that, does that make sense?
I think it's subject to Catherine, so she's satisfied.
Exactly, I'm saying water issue, subject to the, the letter writer, which is Catherine Laurent, being satisfied.
And I think others think the water issue's got nothing to do with what they're trying to do here.
Yes, that's correct.
But we need Catherine to certify that.
So can I get a motion?
Ronnie, can I, can I ask a question? Okay. I don't know whether I'm being the devil's advocate or just the devil here, but let's assume for the sake of argument that there was an issue with the road, that some years ago, the Department of Public Works corrected to their satisfaction as far as the road.
But what it did is it created a condition, as I understand it, that allowed water that fell either in the roadway or across the roadway to come across these people's property.
Yep.
Now, if it comes across their property now, do we know if it's their responsibility to divert something that the DPW created?
I think that's an argument between them and Catherine Laurent.
That's all I want, yeah.
I could tell you more stories, and I'm not gonna waste your time, but that is, we're surmising that it was put on their property by a redesign of a road, we don't know that to be sure. I think all those issues are a Catherine Laurent discussion.
But that's part of the issue that-
Yeah, I agree with a hundred percent. So do I have a motion to extend this until October twenty-fifth?
I'd like a motion to extend, accept the, uh-
Application.
Yeah.
Request.
Application request to move it to, or extend it to October twenty-fifth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No votes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it greatly.
Okay. So, uh, let's see. Charlie, we, we don't have, one second, why don't we just move some paper around, yeah?
Yep.
Lot of paper. Okay, Charlie, would you read the next new hearing into the record, please?
We'll do one. Next new hearing is twenty Oneida Avenue. Owner Gina Gerard, FNA Gina Devlin, requests a written finding under one seventy-four seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a deck and garage with porch addition and extension to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R-three zoning district, map sixty-five parcel forty-eight, Mashpee, Mass.
Do you have? Plot plans?
Okay, Mr. Gray.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, again, members of the board, for the record Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Gina Gerard, the owner of the property, who is with me tonight in the back. Um, as stated in the public hearing notice, uh, she is the owner of property at twenty Oneida Avenue, which is located in the R-three zoning district. Uh, she is seeking a written finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen to add an addition and garage to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Uh, the site itself is, as you can see, a little bit of a uniquely shaped lot. It's twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-six square feet, uh, which is under the forty thousand required in the R-three zoning district. The structure itself is non-conforming in two ways. So again, this is one of those unusual lots where it fronts on both Oneida and, uh, Conachit?
Conachit.
Conachit, uh, Conachit Avenue. So it has to be both front yard setbacks to both of those roads. In this particular case, it's non-conforming because it's only twenty-two point five feet from Oneida, and it's twenty-eight point seven feet from Conachit, uh, where forty feet is required under the bylaw. So what they are proposing is an addition and garage on the Conachit side of the, the structure, which technically would be the rear, except for the fact that there's a road there. So, um, what they, they, this is an already disturbed area, so there is a deck already existing. If you look at the overlay, there's already pavers and a patio type structure, uh, there, so we're just going over of that, this is all cleared out. Um, and so there's a little bit of a, a further encroachment, uh, towards the road. Uh, we're going from twenty-eight point seven to twenty-three point five. We're not creating any new non-conformities, uh, we're not intensifying any non-conformity to Oneida. As I say, this is only on Conachit. And, you know, again, if we treated this as a rear, because it is the back of the property, you're, you know, you'd be fifteen feet would be the setback, and we're gonna be twenty-three point seven. So in that respect, I would say that we're not creating a substantially more detrimental, uh, condition to the neighborhood. Uh, you can also see, there is a drywall that is proposed in this area, uh, of the, of the project. So, uh, happy to answer any questions, but again, we're not, uh, you know, not creating any new non-conformities. We are somewhat intensifying that, this non-conformity from, uh, twenty-eight point seven to twenty-three point five. But I would also note, if you look at the way the road is, as you get from north to south, you keep getting further away from the road. So this, this, this is at its closest point, but it continues to get further away as the road extends. So.
Okay, I'd like to read letters into the record, please, so that the board know what's-
I have some of the comments right here.
Please read them, Charlie.
Forty Oneida Avenue, this is Conservation Department comments received ten to twenty-three. A portion of this property lies within one hundred feet of the top of Inland Bank, associated with Cataquon Pond. And there's a, uh, uh, an email, uh, dated ten to twenty-three, uh, from Dan Kent, relative to twenty Oneida Avenue. At this time, the project is outside the one hundred foot buffer zone, not within Wetlands jurisdiction, and no permit from Conservation is required.
Could you read that, so it didn't, didn't the first letter say a portion of the lot is within one hundred feet?
Right, so, Mr. Chair, if I could note, the hundred foot buffer is here. So the lot itself, portion is within it, but the, the project is outside of that hundred foot buffer. However, when they go to a hundred and fifty feet, the project would be in-
What about lot coverage?
Lot coverage is not an issue, it's not a flood zone, and the lot coverage for this project is eight point, the existing lot coverage is eight point four percent. Proposed lot coverage is ten point nine percent, which is well under twenty percent. So.
So you're just within setbacks, you're, and why don't we read more letters into the record and answer questions, why don't we do that? Sorry, Charlie.
No, no, that's okay, let, let me just start so we can get it all. Uh, this is Dan Kent's, uh, email of ten to twenty-three, uh, relative to the, uh, Conservation. Twenty Oneida Avenue, at this time, the project is outside the one hundred foot buffer zone, not within Wetlands jurisdiction, and no permit from Conservation is required. Effective October twentieth, the one hundred and fifty foot buffer zone will be active, and a permit will, uh, need to be applied for. The only other comment, I think, is the comment relative to Board of Health. Uh, twenty Oneida Avenue, uh, no increase in flow, no comment.
Any other comments to be read in the record?
I didn't have anything in mind.
So I'm gonna ask the board comments, and I'm gonna start if I may. So knowing that this is going to town meeting vote on Monday at a hundred and fifty feet, Counsel, if this board was to approve this application and no changes to this plan, how do you manage to that if in fact Monday night this gets approved?
No, it's already been approved by this board, so.
But, one of the, one of the conditions would be any change to the plan presumably. And if you added a shrub or a tree or anything, you gotta come back to this board.
Right, but that would be anytime, I don't anticipate that this project would be affected by the town meeting. It wouldn't suddenly become part of, become under Conservation Commission, because it's already been applied for.
So then at that point Conservation would have jurisdiction after Monday night, presumably, possibly?
Possibly.
And then all of a sudden, you're gonna go back, now you have to file with Conservation, right?
If I had to, I don't believe that I would have to.
The zoning enforcement officer, what would you believe, would you ask to file, let's just say Monday night, town, town meeting approves at one fifty?
I don't, I believe the one hundred and fifty is already approved, that last year's, um, it's one that's going to be approved by, um, Attorney General.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah. So he's not under it as of yet?
There's not, there's not gonna do that, they, they won't have to go back if they're approved tonight.
I, I don't know if this helps, sorry.
Yeah, I, I think it doesn't become effective until the Attorney General signs it, is that correct?
That's what, that, that day, October twentieth is not Monday night, October sixteenth is Monday night, so I don't, yeah, I, I would say it becomes effective because of the Attorney General accepting it, yeah.
So he's gonna accept it on the twentieth or whatever?
I, I, I don't know.
Or is that up in the?
Yeah, I, I don't know what they're saying, I don't know why it's effective, but you know, again.
See, there's some bravery, see?
This might be relevant, I don't know, I, I have a project coming up where, um, previous owners had the property, um, to have vista pruning done, and it was approved by Conservation, and then the new owners got it, they got a continuation for it, and we, they want the mitigation and all that work done before the raise and replace gets done. And we're not gonna have all that in place before this meeting. So I called Conservation the other, other day, and it said, will this vote affect the tree, because it's a tree bylaw-
Yes.
-coming up, will this affect the tree work we're doing, that's what's been approved, she goes, no, that's all been approved.
Yeah, but this, so I think there's a difference in that, so, and that, that's raised another issue. So if it does go to one fifty, and you're in the one fifty at that point in time, you then, lot coverage is gonna change.
No, because it's not flood zone.
It's not just flood zone, it's even, it's anything under forty, under state statute, wetlands-
Right, but this is buffer zone, it's not wetland.
Yeah, but the one fifty puts it then into the, into the actual wetlands.
No, 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 no. The one fifty is buffer zone, so the wetlands on a different lot. We're within the buffer zone, the buffer zone is not a wetland resource area.
I got you, I just, I'm sitting there going-
Can I, can I interrupt for a second? Us approving, or whatever, this tonight has nothing to do with what town meeting may or may not vote on next week. We, we approve it, if town meeting makes some kind of a ruling, it's got nothing to do with our-
I agree with that.
Our vote tonight. It might affect them as-
All that I was trying to do is to not have them have to come back, that's all. But I agree with you, conceptually, I believe, I agree with that, I do, I do agree with that. But I'm just concerned about having to come back.
But whatever we do here tonight doesn't affect whether or not they have to come back or not come back.
Well, it's, it's, right now, it's not in their jurisdiction, so I think you can-
Even if we approve this.
We vote on what the law is now, yeah, let's go on this.
All right, so, all right, good, so David, you have any input?
There's, I don't see any new non-conformities, and it's-
And so, Counsel, you're not creating any new non-conformities?
I'm not creating any new non-conformities.
And you are extending one?
I am extending one to, to Conachit, Conachit?
Conachit.
Conachit, yes, so again, we're going from twenty-eight point seven to twenty-three point, uh, five.
And this lot's a hardship. This, this lot is awful.
Is the board handling more comments, or am I gonna go to the audience?
Well, it's a funky lot.
It is a funky lot.
It certainly qualifies because of shape.
And they have setbacks that are less than that already.
Right. And again, as you get further down the road, you get further away from it, so. It's really at that closest point.
The lot is a hardship.
All right, so do I have anyone in the audience that would like to speak in reference to this application? Okay, one second. Board, any more questions from the board?
No, I'm good.
Could I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Well, Sharon, you want to make?
I'll, I'll move. Will I move to, um, close public comment?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, all right, so any land issues, anything? Someone more?
No.
Okay, so if someone would like to make a motion in reference to the application, I'd love to hear it.
I can do it. I can make a motion to approve twenty Oneida Avenue, owner Gina Gerard, formerly known as Gina Devlin, request a written finding under section one seventy-four dash seventeen of zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a deck and garage with a porch addition and extension to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on a property located in R-three zoning district, map sixty-five parcel forty-eight, Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions, the board is determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mash General Law forty-eight, section six. Site plan prepared for Gina Gerard, twenty Oneida Avenue, Mashpee, Mass, prepared by David Allen Engineering, sheet one of one, date January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, drawn by W N H, checked by R L R, stamped and signed by Matthew C. Costin, number five two two eight two. House plans Gerard Residence, twenty Oneida Avenue, Mashpee, Mass, prepared by design by S P B, Pocasset, Mass. Plan date three nine twenty-three, A-one proposed right elevation, left elevation, rear elevation, A-two proposed foundation plan, four season room and four floor framing plans, D-one detail sheet, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Any changes to the plan will require the applicant to return to the board. The board finds that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure to either the town or the neighborhood.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Great, thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Okay.
Okay. We're gonna have something to sign? Did you all have that?
Josh, please.
Trash.
Did we get that back?
Not yet.
Scott?
I don't know who's, I don't know who's signing.
Nope, you're pet.
Well, that is fine, I'm sorry. Ron's signature was so minimal, I didn't realize it was-
Ron's fault.
He signs his name, well, he signs like a doctor.
It's too late, no, I have the intelligence, so that's all. All right, so, um, let's see, uh, George, would you like to le, read the next and final new hearing, please?
Sixty-six Massasoit Avenue. Owners Patrick M. and Sharon M. O'Connor request a written finding under sections one seventy-four dash seventeen and sections one seventy-four dash thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a second story addition, alteration and extension to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on a property located in R-three zoning district, map seventy-two, parcel thirty, Mashpee, Mass.
That water's getting awful close. Almost hit it.
Keep one, send one. Keep one, send one. Send that one, hold on, we got. Confusing me, Billy.
That goes. I think it's just a lot of stage. I cannot have a house at this stage that goes.
This is the same one as that one, John.
Okay. Okay, Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, again for the record, and members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Patrick and Sharon O'Connor, who are the owners of sixty-six Massasoit Avenue. Mr. O'Connor is here with me tonight. Um, as the public hearing notice stated, we are seeking a written finding under one seventy-four thirteen to add two additions to a pre-existing non-conforming structure under one seventy-four dash seventeen. The lot size on this is eleven thousand six hundred and forty square feet, which is non-conforming in your R-three zoning district, which requires forty thousand square feet. We do, again, this is a uniquely shaped lot, and also we have two frontages. We have frontage on Secana, and we have frontage on Massasoit. And again, a very kind of funky, funkily shaped, uh, shaped lot. The structure itself, the existing structure, uh, was non-conforming in two ways, and it's both to the front yard setbacks, so it is only three point three feet from Massasoit, and it is nine point seven feet from Secana. And current lot coverage is sixteen point nine percent, so lot coverage is conforming. Uh, the side yard setbacks are conforming, so again, our non-conformities are to Secana at nine point seven and to Massasoit at three point three. So the addition that we're proposing on the Secana drive side of the house will be nineteen point seven feet off of the property line, so that will be further back than the existing non-conformity of nine point seven. So there's no increase in any intensification of any non-conformity. Actually, we're further back on that non-conformity. The non-conformity on Massasoit, which is currently three point three feet, will get intensified to under a foot. However, I would suggest to the board, if you looked at the photographs, where we're proposing this addition is an already disturbed paver patio. So, and if you look at the area of the proposed addition here, where this concrete patio is, we're simply looking to enclose what this area is. So we're not expanding beyond where there's already a previously disturbed area with this concrete paver block, uh, area. So, you know, again, in that sense, I would suggest that even though we are intensifying that non-conformity because of the fact there's already disturbance there with that paver patio, that would not be creating a, a condition that's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, I know that there is at least one letter, uh, from an abutter stating that they support the project. I believe there may be other abutters here tonight who are, uh, supportive of this project. So again, when we're looking at not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, we have the support of our abutters, and also, you know, on the Massasoit side, we're just enclosing an area that's already previously disturbed with that concrete paver patio. Uh, we're not creating any new non-conformities, so there's no creation of any new non-conformities. And, uh, we're not intensifying any other non-conformities, um, other than that one on Massasoit. And, you know, again, the other thing I would point out, I know that the board has been, uh, keeping an eye on, uh, structures that encroach across property lines, I did address this in my narrative. There is a patio in the driveway that goes into the road layout of Massasoit. Massasoit is a private road, in Massachusetts law, when you own, uh, when your lot abuts a private way under what's called the derelict fee statute, you actually own to the center line, and you are allowed to have these encroachments into the road layout so long as they do not interfere with others' rights to pass and repass. So in this particular case, I would suggest to the board that it would not be within their, um, jurisdiction to require those, uh, structures to be removed from that road layout. And again, if you've ever been down Massasoit, I did take some pictures. Massasoit's a pretty, you know, barely paved road, that's not, you know, the forty fi, forty feet wide that we normally see. Um, so again, I just think that in this particular case, we're not encroaching on anybody else's property. This is within the fee that is owned, uh, by the, the owner, or the applicant in this case. So again, I would suggest that we don't, uh, we're not, you shouldn't be concerned with the, the paver patio in the driveway. Uh, as far as lot coverage is concerned, as I said, the existing is sixteen point nine. We're proposing nineteen point one percent, which is under the twenty percent allowed in the R-three zoning district.
Okay, um, could I have any letters read into the record, please?
Abutter letter for sixty-six Massasoit Avenue, to whom it may concern, dated ten eleven, two thousand and twenty-three. I'm writing this letter as a reference for Sharon and Patrick O'Connor, sixty-six Massasoit Avenue, Mashpee. I'm writing in support of their addition, renovation of their home. We've been neighbors for eight years and have become good friends since that time. I've owned my own home on sixty-three Massasoit Avenue for thirteen years, and I've seen many positive changes in our area. New homeowners who are willing to update and do upkeep to their homes and surroundings. The neighborhood has been slowly revitalizing over the years. I recently completed a renovation to my own home, and very happy. I'm fully supportive of the renovation and thank the board for their time with this matter. Sincerely, Sandra Orgino, sixty-three Massasoit Avenue, Mashpee, Mass, zero two six four nine.
Do we have other letters?
I don't see any other letters, I've got the-
Anything from Board of Health, Conservation?
Board of Health, uh, sixty-six Massasoit Avenue, Board of Health, to remain a two-bedroom in Zone Two, no comment. Board of Health, to remain a two-bedroom in zone two, no comment. Conservation comments, 66 Massasoit Avenue. The project has been reviewed and approved by the Conservation Committee. There's a letter from Daniel Kent, 66 Massasoit Avenue. RDA application was approved by the commission at the July 13th hearing.
Board questions?
It's a private way, way, is that correct?
That is correct.
If it becomes public, it's taken by the town, they have to expand that to a proper width, right?
I don't know. That's a DPW question, not for me. It's not a zoning question.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get some background.
Sure.
Because you've got pavers.
Well, generally, a private road is, um, 40 feet wide.
Right. I mean, this road's so old, I mean, that it's never been widened and obviously the.
I agree with what the council, what he said about, um, the value and, uh, on and up to the center of the line.
I do have a question. But what would happen? Just so I can understand. If it was ever taken.
They would take property. Well, I think it goes to the next level, too. I think you say it's a private way.
Correct.
Can I, do I have any rights to drive down that road today?
Legally?
Is it shown on an assesses plan, meaning is it a paper width?
Not sure.
Uh, I think I do. I think I could drive down there today.
Yeah, you could. I mean, I drove down there.
Yeah. My point is, is, well, no, I get it. This goes back to the Pyam days and, and the town of Plymouth where you're building lots in the middle of, you know, nowhere because they're paper streets. So I always get very concerned over paper streets, right? Private ways.
But again, the law, the law in Massachusetts is as long as you're not interfering with people's rights to pass and repass, who have those rights, they can, they're allowed to have those structures there.
Well, you know, I'll.
And again, it's not a zoning issue.
I do agree with what you're saying. But I do have a question about the raised patio, the, what you called is a structure that's there. Um, can I, like, is that, is that, that's not counted towards lot coverage, but how's it justified?
Well, I'm just, all I'm saying is it's already disturbed area. So whether or not.
What specific area are you talking about now?
We're talking about where the addition is going.
This one here or this one?
It's a, okay, it's a.
Yeah, it's about a foothold. So again, I'm not saying that it's a, it's a structure per se. What I'm saying is, is that when we're looking at substantially not detriment, more detrimental to the neighborhood, when we're talking about allowing this encroachment, we're already got disturbance here. So we're simply, we're keeping it within that footprint of that disturbance already.
And you're talking about the one that's, uh, Secana, right?
No, the one that's going to Massasoit.
So that's the ones, the pavers?
Yes, that's correct.
There's trees in it.
I'm not sure it really matters whether it's disturbed or not. I, I think that's irrelevant. The setback on that side, it's 3.3. It's supposed to be 40 feet.
That is correct.
I'm really concerned about .7.
Well, again, there's already disturbed structure. There's already disturbed structure there. We're simply enclosing the house that, you know, basically it's already, you know, part of the structure.
Well, you said there's no structure there.
No, I know. But if you, if you look at the picture, we're simply enclosing that, okay? With structure. We're not tripping the lot coverage, and there's no neighbor there.
So wait a minute. I'm confused. The setback is 3.3.
That is correct, the house.
You want to move that to .7?
I do. I want to allow the board to approve a struck, an enclosure of the structure of the house that will be .7 off that property line. But I'm saying is.
I think it's setting a really bad precedent.
I think that could be stepped back, that addition could be stepped back to keep it at 3.3.
Go back to 3.3.
Either clip it or step it back to get to 3.3.
It's setting a real bad precedent.
I, I agree with you.
19 feet off the road.
So other, other comment from this board? Scott, would you like to say something?
Uh, my only other comments are more for Dave. I, it's more structural comments, but it's really not a zoning issue. My, I have an issue zoning-wise with that .7.
Okay, so you do have an issue. Billy, what are your thoughts?
Same.
Sharon, what are your thoughts? Seems like .7 is, uh, not, not gonna work.
No, I think they should have kept it.
I mean, I think that could be stepped back.
So counselor, are you hearing from the board that .7 is an issue?
Yeah, I think what, uh, and I can go back to my client, because one of the things we could do is that, uh, you know, you can cantilever it, he can, you know, get his, get at least two feet there.
Do whatever you need to do.
But, you know.
I'd keep it as close to three as possible. I don't think it should go anywhere over that way. It's already way too close. It is what it is.
No, you can't cantilever it.
Yeah, you can't.
You can?
But that constitutes, like, David?
I'll ask David after another question.
Cantilever would still be setback, would still be in the setback.
I thought we couldn't cantilever. That was still concluded in the same as the setback.
It's still considered setback.
Yeah, so that doesn't help.
You can cantilever if you go two feet.
I think you can just step that room back.
Yeah, I think you just, exactly, just run.
Clip it. Either come on an angle or, either angle it or.
I do remember talking to them when I was saying the same thing. But they can propose wherever they want.
You can propose it.
Just bring it parallel to the, to the road line and you clip it.
I agree with set the precedence.
3.3. I think that's the way the board would go, and I did imagine that.
15 to 14, 9, I mean, one thing, we're talking.
The sheds aren't allowed that close.
You're getting a lot of structure added to this as it is. I don't think coming back three feet on that one room. I didn't look at the floor plan, how it affects that.
I, I've mentioned the same thing to you.
And I, no one's more pro-building than me, then they could all work, but that, I think is really pushing it.
But I'm not gonna tell them that they can't propose it.
No, no, no. You can propose anything you want.
I don't think you can tell them that. They can propose it. Counselor, what are your, what are your thoughts, counselor? Take a vote right now. Move this question. You've heard from the board.
Um, while we're waiting for counselor, do you have an issue, or would you require a structural engineer to allow a second floor to go on a house that has an existing cinder block foundation? I have never seen a.
No, no, I asked for an engineer to stamp.
Yeah, I've never seen a second floor addition be, work on a house that had a cinder block foundation.
That would be.
But this is on a patio. This is really not a foundation, this is a patio.
But I thought they were raising the roof.
They're putting a second floor in this place. Isn't there a second floor going on here? It's a ranch.
But that has other.
I was told it's not a structure because it's paved.
Yeah, there would be a second floor.
No, they're putting a second floor addition on here.
That would be really.
It's a building, I know, that's what I said.
Let's, let's keep this one. So counselor, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think, I know there's people from the public who would like to speak, so before I request anything, I'd like at least for them.
More happy to go to the public.
Have them have an opportunity to speak.
Okay, well, you've heard from the board, why don't I go to the public? Anyone in the public like to give comment in reference to this application? Please come up to the mic, give your name, address, please, and feel free to speak.
I don't want to ruin the suspension of your good cheer.
Oh, you'll never hear it.
My name is Doug Simple. I am resident of 43 Secana Drive. I am a direct abutter across from that issue that you're talking about. I am very much in favor of this second-story alteration, extension of a nonconforming structure. I look directly at the house from my front porch. They made improvements, and I think these improvements will in fact bring more valuation to the neighborhood. I certainly don't think it is detrimental to the neighborhood in any way. In fact, I think it is just the opposite. The final thing is, that I'll say is, is that one and two-story homes is within the character of the neighborhood. And if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer them. If there are not.
Can I respond?
Sure.
To that? Um, I totally agree that the renovation, second floor, all are positive. Everything's a positive. My issue as one member is that getting closer to the lot line, the street, I mean, is setting a precedence to anything we have coming to us in the future.
Exactly.
That's my issue.
But I do need to say.
I don't have an issue with the structure. I'm all for, I'm pro-building.
But I do need to say that the, the ability to build the second story or not is a building application that's not this board.
That's correct.
This board right now understands clearly it's gonna be, if, if approved, an addition, which would include a second floor. We get, the concerns that this board has depicted so far is the .7 to the law. You understand? We have other applications.
Very much so.
So it's hard as a member to say it is not more detrimental to the neighborhood going from 3.3, which is problematic in itself, although it's existing non-conforming, uh, pre-existing nonconformity, you have a right to keep that, but to take that down to a .7 is an issue. That's what we're saying. So I thank you for your input. Uh, we will take it under consideration.
Thank you for your time. I would just simply say that the matter of private roads will be settled soon enough. Um, and I, I believe truly, um, that this is a good thing for the area.
Thank you very much.
For the zoning board to fight in favor. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else in the audience like to speak on this?
Application.
Application on this hearing. Yes, sir. Could you give your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Gary Briggs. I live at, uh, 51 Massasoit Avenue, uh, a couple houses up. Bought it in 2016 when the neighborhood was pretty sketchy. Uh, in fact, the day we closed, I was trying to put it in a medicine cabinet and bumped the pedestal sink and a bag of heroin fell out of it. So that neighborhood had a very bad reputation, um, which most, has mostly has been, been cured. The, the neighborhood is, is getting better and better and better. There are a lot of people, there was a lot of, uh, un-insulated fishing shacks there now. People are having, are building forever homes there. That's what, my wife and I left the People's Republic of California, and our, our permanent home is there, right at the corner of, uh, Massasoit and Kapawak. Uh, and I gotta tell you that, that Patrick's a great neighbor, and when he bought that house about the same time I did, it was, it was pretty dumpy. So I, I support the addition. Um, the, Massasoit is a, is a very sketchy street. It's, it's, somebody had a sense of humor when they called it an avenue. And, and right now, it'd be difficult for two golf carts to pass side by side going down that street. But, but other than that, I totally support the, the addition of the second story. These have been exemplary neighbors, uh, they've added to the neighborhood and, uh, totally support them.
Thank you very much.
Second story's not even a zoning, it's not even, the second story's not even a zoning.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in your audience? Chris, you're here, so why don't we do this? Does the board opinion of this .7 change?
No.
Okay. Chris, what would you like to do?
Well, I guess I just, can I just make two final points? Or three final points? I mean, again, you know, we're looking, we have to look at things not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. You've heard from the neighborhood. I mean, that has to carry some weight with this board, that the neighbor, the neighbors who are here are in favor, who would be mostly, who'd be the most impacted by this project, have all, have come out in support of this project. So I think that has to carry some weight with the board as far as substantially more detrimental. And, and what we're talking about, you know, we're going from 3.3 to .7. Under the bylaw, you know, my client would probably have the right to do a two-foot cantilever without it counting towards the setback. Because set, can't, two-foot cantilever is not part of, it does not count it to your setback. So we're really talking about about six inches here overall. And finally, I would just say, you know, as.
I don't know if that's true or not.
I'd like to see that in the bylaw, how that's written, because I always thought all cantilevers were considered on the first floor. I could be wrong.
So. It's in your notes.
It's mentioned to the, what he's saying is it's measured to the foundation, but you have a two-foot cantilever. I still don't see that, I still see that increasing, uh, the 3.3.
Yeah, I'm just afraid this is gonna come back and haunt us in the future with someone coming back to us saying, you let it happen before. Maybe this neighborhood, everybody's good with it, but.
So.
I agree.
No, again, if you look at note 19 of the bylaw, it says, "These setback requirements shall not apply to the following building projectors, provided they do not exceed the sizes specified, as measured from the foundation line along a line perpendicular to the earth's property line. Overhang projection, projecting no more than two feet," which is your cantilever. That's why you see a lot of projects, you know.
So it doesn't have to step it back as far as, in my opinion.
Right, but then.
That's, it's seven feet, it's seven foot nine, the addition. So that's, makes it 5.9. It, it's still, you know, my point is, it's still adding on to the 3.3, which the board has to concern. But it's still up to the board, it's a, it's a finding.
Right, I mean, we're not talking about a large, and again, you know, I would say, as we looked at the last project, obviously it wasn't as close to the property line, but it is a unique lot. We are dealing with two, um, you know, two roads. Massasoit, the road itself is out here, so we're not, we're, you know, actually more than 17 feet from the road itself. So, you know, I'm just trying to.
If you cantilever in two, two decks, too, that would be tough to do, wouldn't it?
I'm going back to, it's supposed to be 40 feet.
Well, you could do it, yeah, you'd have to get some kind of LBLs or whatever. You could do it. I'm a structural engineer, but yeah, you could do it.
Now, my question is if the foundation, I know this is part of Dave's, but if the, the engineer says there's something wrong with the foundation, can't we move, like, worst-case scenario, the house could actually move later.
If they had to do, if there'd be a raise of a place.
They have to raise or replace it.
Then it's a razor replace.
You still have an application in front of you right now. It's .7. So that's.
Yeah.
So what, how would the board like to proceed?
How would he like to proceed?
Well, I mean, I, is the board at this point still?
Do you want us to vote on it?
Well, I don't, I, again, you know, based on the comments that have been made from the, from the abutters who were directly affected, you know, when we talk about substantially not substantially more detrimental, the neighborhood's telling you it's not substantially more detrimental.
Why don't I do this for you, Chris? Why don't I go around the board? Are you still, uh, do you, do you have a problem with the .7, even with the understanding of the two?
I do.
Billy?
I do.
Sharon?
I do, and I'm very familiar with the neighborhood.
So I'm, I, I have a concern also. So how would you like to proceed?
It's not, it's not a matter, Chris, in my, in my mind, anyway, as one member, that the neighbors like the project. It's really the board setting a precedent for other.
We've had these issues with.
Somebody in the next tree over is gonna say.
He gave them.
We've had issues with houses that were built just a little over the ridge height, and we said, you gotta bring it down.
No, I understand, but we're, but we're not, but, but even like the last project, we, this board allowed for an intensification of the existing nonconformity. We have an existing nonconformity.
But it didn't get.
Yeah, but you didn't go down to points.
It didn't increase it.
No, it did. It did increase it.
I don't remember what their minds was.
It doesn't matter, boy.